It's six o'clock, we'll call the meeting to order. If you'll please rise for the pledge and remain standing for the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Reverend Turner?
Mayor and City Council? I don't think we're all here.
There we go. Mayor and City Council, good evening to you and residents of Allen Park. Let's pray. Almighty God, we bow before you this evening because we know in you we are never without hope. And so, God, we thank you for how you smile upon this awesome city. Thank you for all the services that Mayor and City Council come together to provide for these upstanding residents. May we, Lord God, be gracious with one another when it comes to our own imperfections. Bless this evening, we pray. Amen.
Thank you. Ms. Mizzi, if you'll take the roll call, please.
Councilman Lloyd?
Here.
Councilman Schlat?
Present.
Councilman Barr?
Yeah.
Councilman Marcos?
Here.
Councilman Valerius?
Here.
Councilwoman Nick?
Here.
And Mayor McLeod?
Here.
For the record, Tim Astheimer.
Present.
Thank you. May I have a motion to approve the, I'm sorry, wrong line. May I have a motion to correct or approve tonight's agenda?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Marcos.
Second.
Second by Mr. Lloyd. Comments or questions?
Can I make an amendment to the agenda, Mayor?
Yes.
So for Resolution Two, I'd like to change it to say, whereas the city administrator tendered his resignation, but the resignation is not effective as of this date and has not been formally accepted by the city council, and whereas the H.R. Committee met with Mr. Kibbe and discussed revising his current compensation package and continuing his appointment as city administrator, now therefore the city council acknowledges and agrees to the recession of the resignation and agrees to the following compensation package effective June 17, 2024, annual base salary $146,500, annual vehicle expense $4,800, $100 a month. And just for the record, every council and clerk has been given that language.
Any other changes or addendums?
I would like to, let me get the proper word, table to next meeting, the number three?
Resolution three.
Resolution three.
We can, you don't need to table it, just in case you can't untable it for some reason. I'll just remove it till next meeting.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
So we don't have to have a vote or anything on it?
No. Which makes sense, I just wanted to review it further. Okay, clean it up. Any other changes? So we have a motion from Mr. Marcos, seconded by Mr. Lloyd. Are these changes acceptable to you on your motions?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion is carried. May I have a motion to approve the minutes from the regular meeting of May 28?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Valerius.
Second.
Second by Mr. Marcos. Any corrections? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion is carried, thank you. We now will move on to organizational business and we'll start with Mr. Mizzi.
Okay, Mayor and Council, I come before you as the applicant for the beer and wine permits through the state of Michigan for the Allen Park Street Fair to be held Friday, August 2nd and Saturday, August 3rd. And then now you could apply for multiple, so we just put it all on one app. So we also ask for the May to Michigan festivals, which has already been approved, like the street fair, for September 20th through Saturday, September 21st. So basically, I just need a motion and a support and a vote to place on a resolution to the state.
So move, Mayor.
Mr. Lloyd?
Second.
And second by Mr. Barr, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Any comments or questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Thank you for that. City Treasurer has a report.
Thank you, Mayor. Just want to point out a couple things that are going on. We have tax bills being mailed out July 1st, so in about three weeks from now. The summer tax bill is going to be the highest tax bill for our residents. That has city operating, school taxes, including millages, police and fire, that type of thing. Summer taxes are due back to our office by August 15th to avoid penalties. You'll notice a few things different this year. We now have included a return envelope for those that mail their check. And then there's also a QR code on there if you wanted to pay online. So that'll be included in your tax bill as a matter of a convenience. Also, be sure to read the back of the tax bill. A lot of people just will read the front, figure out what they owe and take care of that. But the back has many, many questions that we get answered this time, or asked this time of year. All those answers are in the back of that tax bill, so please read that if you can. Soon, you'll be receiving the second quarter mailing of the Allen Park Today magazine. Be sure to look through that. There is a couple pages dedicated to the treasurer and it goes over many, many frequently asked questions that we get in this office. So there, there's even a lot of different examples. So say you purchase a home, it kind of goes through the math to show you. If you're looking for something specific, it's helpful. Otherwise, it's a bit complicating, complicated. I will attest to that. It's taken me a while to wrap my brain around it, but I figured I would share with you what I've learned and that might help you with that going forward. We have some different programs available right now at the treasurer's office. They are the ACH billing, which you could sign up for and that would automatically withdraw from your account at tax time. It has to be completed and returned before the summer tax bill's due date. So we're hoping like August 1st, since the due date's August 15th. There's also an application for sub or deferment of taxes for those folks that can't afford to pay that tax bill this time of year. This extends it to the final due date of February 14th and that could be paid with your winter taxes as well. There are some things that you need to identify whether you qualify for that and we're happy to go over that with you and this is also available on the website. And last is our veterans exemption. This is important to me, coming from a military family, but the veterans exemption allows veterans to be exempt from those taxes. It's something that has to be filled out every year. This is handled by our city assessor, so if you have any specific questions regarding that, you can contact them, although we do have the forms at the treasurer window. All these forms, as I said, can be picked up, downloaded from the website, but they have to be returned to the treasurer's desk by August 1st, we're asking, but no later than August 15th, as that's the summer tax bill due date. And that's all I have for you tonight, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else who have any questions of Mr. Astheimer? Hearing none, we'll move on to the administrator's report.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, residents. Just a few updates. Reek Road is reopened at Goddard Road and at Wick Road. I agree with Councilman Barr on that and I do, Treasurer Astheimer as well. Pinecrest Drive project is started. Curbs are being removed and replaced. Underground piping is being installed and construction should continue over the next two months. Great project here. The Champagne Park parking lot project is completed. Restoration is all done and that is now open for parking as well. The Allen Road, I just call it the Allen Road Philomene Park Avenue public space. I didn't want to call it the theater site, but the public space there. The construction of the parking lot started today. Construction should take seven to 10 more days, weather permitting. And the painting of the wall also started today and is completed. And I think it looks pretty darn good out there, so. Good color choice, I think, on that too. The reconstruction of Wick Road, and this is going to be Pelham Road to railroad tracks and Herrick Street. Pelham Road to the cul-de-sac is scheduled to start in mid-July. And then just congratulations, the following employer we reached on my last 20 years of service with the city, Captain Ken McLaurin, 25 years on June 24th. He may be older than a couple of the firefighters over there, I mean worked as long as that, so. And if I could, this potentially my last meeting here, I just want to say a few words if you can indulge me for those for a couple minutes here. Just very appreciative, had the opportunity to work here for the city of Allen Park. It's been a great place to work. I'd like to take a moment to thank Bill Matekis, Mayor Bill Matekis, council members Bob Keenan, Angelo DeGiulio, Dennis Hayes, Tina Rigetti, Harry Cisco and Larry Templeton for giving me this opportunity back in 2015. I'd also like to thank Mayor McLeod and many other council members, past and present, for having the faith in me to continue to do what I love. I also need to thank my mentor, Bob Katie, for helping me to bring me to the city of Allen Park as an interim Assistant City Administrator back in 2015. While a student at the University of Troy Mercy in 1994, I changed my major from Architecture Political Science. This definitely was not an easy conversation at the kitchen table with my father. But I told him I wanted to get my master's degree in public administration and help a city get out of trouble, get out of financial trouble. Never, ever did I figure that that city would be the city of Allen Park. I grew up in, I grew up in Melvindale and we'd always looked over here at Allen Park as the, as a, the test of what was going well. Little did I know until I got here, you start peeling the onion and it stinks every layer after that and there was a reason we were in financial trouble. It was not the movie studio, that was just a tipping point. It was, it was other aspects that were done by the previous administration. That's a whole different story. The last council meeting was overwhelming. While I appreciate all the kind comments and the, I appreciate all the kind comments, the accomplishments in Allen Park are the result of a team effort by a great group of department heads and staff that want the best for the city. They were all in the back, you guys saw them all, they're a phenomenal group of people. My dad told me two things, that it would have been his 81st birthday or his 86th birthday, depending if it was my grandmother was the one that knew or not, because he lied to my mother and said that he was five years older when he was actually five years younger. So, good one for dad, but happy birthday to dad. He told me two things. One, when something good happens, make sure everyone gets credit. And two, make sure that you leave something better than you found it. Hopefully that is the case here. Allen Park has come a long way, but there are still a number of things that need to be completed. Decisions that have been made so far have not been easy and tough decisions are far from over. As I end this, I also need to thank my wife and son. My wife Jeanie's always there to listen to me rant when I get home and let me tell you, I rant. And Matthew's always found a way to share a smart aleck comment from the New York City area. To anyone that I missed, I also say thank you. Again, thank you to the city of Allen Park for the opportunity I've served you. I will continue to keep in touch and wish you continued prosperity.
May I have a motion to file, to accept and file the administrator's report?
Motion.
Motion, Mayor.
Motion by Mr. Lloyd.
Second.
Second by Mr. Valerius. Any comments or questions?
I just want to say real quick, Mayor, thank you for sharing that, Mark. I know that that's not easy to do up here. We've talked about.
It's not easy to talk.
And so I, I just want to, on behalf of the city, thank you for sharing that with us. It means a great deal. All the work that you've done up to this point means a great deal. Thank you.
Any other, thank you. Any other comments? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion is carried. We come to public comments, which are four minutes. All we ask is that you provide your name and the street on which you live. Please do not provide your entire address. And all that we ask is that you keep your comments civil.
My name is John Larkin. I want to introduce myself to the good citizens of Allen Park as well as to the city council and mayor. I am running for Circuit Court Judge here in Wayne County and I just wanted to take two minutes to introduce myself. As I said, my name is John Larkin. I practiced here in Wayne County for the past 32 years and I've been helping people in their most trying times when they had, whether it be civil problems or criminal problems or bankruptcy or landlord tenant, whatever it might be, I tried to help people out during that time. I'm not going to go into too much about my practice. I just want to say that I recognize that everybody stumbles in life and that everyone needs second chances. And I believe that as a judge, as a, hopefully a prospective judge, is that I will do two things. Is one, I will administer individual justice as well as protect the community, with the community having the higher priority. I also want to tell you a little bit about my family. I've been, I married my law school sweetheart. We've been married for 28 years. We have three wonderful adult children. I also have adopted two furry friends from a rescues. That, a little bit about my extended family, we are, we are a strong union family. I have never owned a foreign car in my life and never will. That, that many of my family is made up of pipe fitters and firefighters and truck drivers. And I want you to know that I understand those issues and I will protect those people and those issues when they come before me on the Wayne County Circuit Court. Last thing I just want to say is that I ask that you look for me on the ballot. I'll be on the nonpartisan ballot. My name is John Larkin again and it's on August 6th will be the primary. And if anyone wants to get a little more information on me, it's at www.larkinnumber4judge.com. So I appreciate your time and you're listening to me. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening, City Council, Mayor Ray McGusson-Quant. Forty-seven years I lived in this city. I raised my family here and we've been here ever since. Both of my kids now live and wind out. Sorry to say that. And they both have two wonderful children. I'm here because I'm a very concerned citizen. I've been here when the ups and downs. I was here when the emergency manager was here. I came up to this podium many, many times. You saw me there. I fought with it. I fought in order to go ahead and keep you people controlling this city. I was against emergency manager. I told the city council at that time, don't bring him in. They did it anyways. So when they came in, they realized that we are in deep trouble. And that's the reason why they brought emergency manager in here. So this time, I'm going to say a couple of things. There was other things I was going to say today, but I'm going to hold off. We have to watch out what we're doing. We're $77 million in the hole. The movie studio is not paid for. The interest is just astronomical. I have no idea how even we're going to pay that. But that's only part of the $77 million we're in the hole. With all this interest, that I'm going to start asking how much, I would really like to find out where we're going. I understand we have to maintain people here. I understand we have to pay them well. But what happens after a while, if they're going to plan to leave, then some, all of a sudden, we're going to come in with a payment to try to keep them, you're going to start a problem. Because every one of them in the corner over here are going to start coming up here and asking for major pay increases. Nothing against you, Mark. Nothing against you at all. When we pay somebody over $100,000 and we're going to continue to pay them 3% pay increases yearly, how much is that? That's $3,000 more every year. It gets compounded over the years. So it ain't no $3,000. It turns into maybe $3,200. But the next year is another $3,000. And that turns into $6,000. Now, we're going to also pay individuals, which I can understand, certain people be able to use their vehicles and take them home. Other people, I have no idea why they're taking a vehicle home. None whatsoever. I want that to be looked at and find out why these departments are allowing people to take their vehicles home. I understand why the fire chief takes us home. I totally understand it. I wouldn't want that stuff in my house either or my personal vehicle. I am very concerned. Home prices are now at $240,000, beyond our children's able to buy them. That's $44,000, they're going to have to come down with a down payment. Get ready, Mom and Dad and Grandma and Grandpas, because they're going to come into you and asking for your help. I'm only up here just because I need to, okay? Because I feel like I have to. I want to thank you very much for my time. I want to thank you very much, Gil, for if I went over. I didn't go over. Thank you very much. But with that, I'm going to ask for five minutes at the next meeting. Thank you very much. Have a great day. Be safe, everybody.
Pam Smith, Philomene, through the chair. Mark, I do agree with you. All of our department heads as well as the workers should be very, very much appreciated for what they do for our city. However, I also feel that there is no "I" in the word "team." All of these people are part of one huge team, which should consist of strong leaders, our mayor, our city administrator. They are the ones that are, what I feel, is our driving force. They are the ones that we stand behind and we support. So in order for us to continue to improve and make the city as we expect it to be and to continue to flourish, I can't tell you how happy I am to see Resolution Number, I think it's two, I don't have my glasses on. I feel, and this is totally my opinion, for the work that Mr. Kibbe has done and what he will continue to do, hopefully, the salary is not, I shouldn't even say unexpected. To me, it's still not where it should be. And if people don't agree with me, that's fine. But coming from a managerial position, he's still underpaid. Should he continue in his role and he's voted in? Phenomenal, fantastic. We're still getting a huge deal as a city. To still take the time to vet someone else, to get someone in up and running, they may not have a handle on Mark's contacts. They may not be able to step in as quickly as the city needs. As a concerned citizen, Pam Smith, I would like to see Mark stay. It is my responsibility as a citizen to ask you to please pass this resolution and have Mark keep his seat. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, Tina Rigetti, Leslie. First, I'd like to talk about the resolution for the H.R. Committee brought forward and the city administrator. First, I want to say a huge thank you to the H.R. Committee for bringing that resolution to the mayor and council to look into. Second, I know firsthand what it's like to retain an experienced administrator. Therefore, we need him to stay. So I would ask that you would vote yes. I've been here. Mr. McGusson was just up here talking. I've been here when the administrator doesn't know what he's doing or tries to. So anyway, I would hope that voting yes on this resolution is the correct thing to do for both the residents, staff and department heads. Voting no on this resolution means you are sitting up here with a personal agenda and you have no regard to what is in the best interest of this city. So I ask you to do the right thing, voting yes on this resolution, please. I would also like to thank Mayor McLeod, Councilman Valerius, Councilman Marcos, Councilman Lloyd, for your council comments at the last meeting. They were much appreciated and heartfelt. Mayor, should this pass and the administrator decides to stay, I ask on behalf of my mom and a few other residents that the administrator return back to his seat where he was at the council table. You are all adults. You need to act like adults and stop acting like children. Thank you.
Wayne Smith, Philomene, per the agenda, Resolution Number Two, to raise the city administrator's salary to keep Mark Kibbe, everybody needs to pass this unanimously. Everyone needs to pass a resolution and that includes you, Nancy Nick. You need to put away your childish behaviors and vendettas and do what's right for the city. It's not about you, but it's what is in the best interest.
Please, no personal comments.
It's what's in the best interest of the residents of Allen Park. And I would implore all of you then to vote yes to keep Mark Kibbe. Thank you.
We'll be bouncing around everywhere. First off, happy pride. Last week, we had, you guys had a great study session, very informal. It should always be like that. I suggest have more, especially if you want to inform residents about the fire station. Second, please make sure that everyone goes and supports local businesses as well as all these fun events happening in Allen Park in the next few months. Volunteers, you're all up here to represent the city. I suggest now it's summertime, start helping, volunteering during these events. Next, you're up here for four years or more. Can't take things personal. You cannot have to have thick skin. I can imagine how many times, when I was up there, the amount, I've been called many things, but guess what? I came here to do the job, whether I was the popular or not the popular vote. The last four years, I want to thank Mark for all the things he's done. When I was on council as well as since 2015, I've been in the audience, just like Ray, up and down throughout the city. As I mentioned before, it's always good, do you leave on a good note, because people will respect you more. Is, I want to thank Mark to getting those grants for the historical house. I know you guys just had a little event the other day for the landscaping and I think it's going to look great for that house. So again, thank you, Mark. But always just remember, you're here to represent the residents, the 28,000 residents. This isn't for yourself, it's for the residents. And I know you all are doing a good job. I know it's only been seven months to you and four years, I know it seemed, and even longer, it might seem a lifetime and all that stuff, but just again, always think about the residents when you make a vote. Do the right thing and as I always say, stay positive, because you never know what people are going through in your personal life. And thank you. God bless.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Wayne Albright, Promenade Avenue. Also, if you can believe it, Mayor, four years since I retired from the police department. I cannot believe it's been that long. But I have kept up with cities, things that are going on in the city, good and bad. Same with the police department, things that are good and bad. I still have a lot of friends over there that are telling me what's going on. I've wanted to come for quite a while to express just I've wanted to come for quite a while to express just some concerns. Been there for 27 years, so I still feel like that's part of me. So I have a question for all of you. Don't expect an answer, but it's something to think about while I do speak. I wonder who is in charge of monitoring or overseeing the fundraising efforts for the police department? Who's in charge of the checks and balances to make sure that things are done above board? As an example, how much money is collected during some of these fundraising events? And there's been a lot of them over the last four years to get extra things for the police department. But I wonder who's in charge of that? And the only answer I have is the chief. Where's the money go? The only answer is the chief knows, nobody else. More importantly, I wonder if permits are pulled, because unless I'm a wrong city attorney, permits have to be pulled when you run fundraisers for the very fact that you need to have accountability for where the money goes and that it's being allocated for the correct thing. And we don't know that right now. My doubts, I have serious doubts as to whether permits have been pulled ever. And this goes all the way back to the CERT program back, oh gosh, six, seven years ago, when the chief was lieutenant and solely in charge of that. A lot of fundraising for the CERT program, a lot of money was made in overtime because of that CERT program, and a lot of fundraising. And yet, when the chief became, or when the lieutenant became chief, that program just disappeared. We don't have CERT anymore. And I question where that money went? If any, where was it funneled to? Because there was a lot of fundraising, including federal money, that went to that CERT program. Closer to home is something I saw on Facebook recently, which I'm very proud of, the honor guard uniforms, and there was a bunch of thanks on Facebook to people that gave money for uniforms. My question is, overseeing that, who oversees the dispersing of money and how foolish it may be spent? Because I don't understand why the chief of police has a uniform that he went and used as an honor guard detail one time, and he's retiring in July. I mean, he's cleaning out his office now. That's the word I'm getting from the guys over there. So why use that expense when it could have been used for another officer to go to school that would probably use a uniform for years and years to come? But he just wasted money because there's no oversight, correct? One of the other things that, one of the reasons why I had to come up here was because I'm kind of embarrassed when people ask me, as of late, that I'm a retired police officer. I saw on social media the chief law enforcement officer of our city begging for money, asking people in the city for food for him and his family, when he makes a really good amount of money. Maybe people don't understand that even though he was off, he's getting paid. And it was because of the surgery. I don't want to feel, I don't want to be insensitive, but I had a surgery back 10, 12 years ago, in line of duty injury, some of you might remember. My leg was tore up pretty good in a fight in the middle of winter. And it took two surgeries and a whole year for me to come back. I never imagined in my wildest dreams to ever think, to ask the public to pay for meals for my family. It's kind of embarrassing, and it's a little bit, you know, I think it's just a little bit, I don't know, unethical or borderline illegal. I mean, we're talking about a city official soliciting money for personal gain. And I just think it was wrong. I think it sent a wrong message. I don't know if anybody up on this council advised him he should have taken that down right away, but I sure had an awful lot of people complaining to me that it looked pretty foolish. So my time's up. My last thing, please keep Mark Kibbe. He needs to be here for the city.[844.01][844.01](applause)
Edwardsbacher, Meyer Avenue. I'm gonna shift gears here a little bit. June 26th, during the Music in the Street ceremony, we're gonna have an acknowledgement ceremony and give out certificates to the bands that came out of Allen Park that had national and international success, along with the DJs that came from Allen Park that were widely known through the '60s and '70s in Detroit area, that they had also called Allen Park their home. So I'd like everybody to come out June 26th for that. It's gonna be a fun night. Rick Stevers from Frigid Pink, he gave me some T-shirts today and some records, vinyl records and CDs. Everybody that comes gets a free ticket. Then we're gonna draw, and somebody's gonna go home with some stuff. Next thing I'd like to discuss is Resolution Number Two. On a business standpoint of stability for our community, like I alluded to at last council meeting, I moved here because I seen the financial value and the stability of the city itself. And I think it would behoove each and every one of you to vote yes for Resolution Two. That's it. Everybody have a great evening. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Kurt Maisag, Becker Avenue, and I'm president of the Allen Park Citizens Civic Fund, APCCF. We're a 501(c)(3) charitable nonprofit organization, created by a group of Allen Park citizens to provide support to new and existing community organizations to address unmet community needs. During our history, we've paid for a new roof on the community center by acquiring a $400,000 grant. We paid for a new roof for the historical museum and did various other projects for Parks and Rec, the library, and the fire department. Also, we've purchased, assembled, and distributed Stop the Bleed kits to classrooms within our school systems and various city buildings like the library. Today, I'm here to let you know that the APCCF is having its premier fundraising event, a pizza, wine, and beer tasting on June 20th, which just happens to be next week. Other than grants, this event is our major fundraiser and allows us to take on larger projects that we wouldn't otherwise be able to handle. Join us for the beer, wine, and pizza, and also a poker raffle, 50/50 raffles, and a silent auction, which includes a 28-inch Blackstone standalone griddle, a couple of Rouge Factory tours, a rigid 18-volt tool combo kit, a round of golf for four at U of M, and an autographed football with a training camp experience from the Lions. And there's a lot of other good stuff, too. Gift certificates and the such. Okay. I placed flyers in the doorway, unless Mike says I have to move them. And you can get tickets at the community center or our website, www-allenparkccf.org. And just as a stroke of good luck, I do happen to have tickets with me.[1136.41][1136.41](laughter) But we'll wait until after the meeting until I start selling them, if that's okay. Switching gears, I'm also the Chair of the Downtown Development Authority. The DDA is a pseudo-independent entity governed by a Board of Directors, which is appointed by the City Council. I would like to take this opportunity to apologize to Mark Kibbe. So many times, we take for granted what people around us do. I firmly believe this is the case with Mark. We fail to recognize the exceptional things that he's done for the city. I believe that with you, Mark, the DDA and the city can do some real good. And I believe the same can be said for APCCF. The city is better with you than without you. Mark, a lot more people do appreciate you than you realize. The silent majority will always exist, and it is sad that the squeak is louder. Always listen for the silence, as that's where the real appreciation is. Vote yes on Two. And finally, Mark, if you decide to stay, I will waive my dibs on the helmets.[1226.83][1226.83](applause)
Hello, Honorable Counsel. My name is Sylvia Ordunio. I'm actually a Detroit resident, but I'm here because I am a longtime community organizer in the Tri-County area. And I've been working for many years with residents in Wayne County, including residents of Ecorce, Allen Park, Ramblis, Garden City, Dearborn, Durbin Heights, Melville, and so on. And I'm here because I wanted to ask for your support for statewide water affordability. And I come here because, again, I've been talking to many communities, many residents, for all of the work I've been doing over 27 years on water affordability. I work at a small anti-poverty organization based in downtown Detroit. And for many years, I've been hearing stories from residents who can't afford to pay their bills. And I know that this is something that, as local officials, you've got to regularly grapple with about what happens when residents can't pay their bills, what do you do when you've got to increase the cost of operations, maintenance, and now infrastructure improvements, and how to balance that on how you manage to keep down bills. Right now, there is a set of six bills in the legislature that have been led by Senator Stephanie Chang. I know that Representative Liberati is also looking at these very closely and is wanting to hear more engagement around the issues. We know that a lot of low-income residents continue to have problems paying their bills, but not because they don't want to pay. People always want to pay their bills. And I come from a very working-class background. My dad was a truck driver, and we always did everything we had to do to pay the bills, right? Even if we had to go and get little side jobs from our neighbors to help out. So it's never about that people don't want to pay their bills. It's about that it gets hard to pay bills that you can't control. I could tell you, like, for my own water bill, only about 10% of my water bill is the part that I can control, and that's what comes out of the tap that I use. So even if I cut down on showers, try to do laundry in smaller loads or less often, I still can't control that drainage or stormwater bill and the wastewater bill from what gets flushed down into the sewer. That's the biggest part of our bills that customers can't control. And we know that there's opportunities right now to maybe get some federal funding and improve our infrastructure. It still doesn't decrease the costs that a lot of residents are paying, and it's a really worrisome thing. I come from a place where mass shut-offs were the answer, but they're not the answer. And we saw very much so how it impacts people and their public health, their ability to go to school safely, to work, not be shamed or embarrassed. And we don't want that for any other community. So we've been talking to people across Tri-County area again, and so many people are supportive of this. But people obviously have questions. So I'm just asking if you all will maybe take a deeper look at the legislation. I'm happy to come back, talk more about it. I put a summary document of it in there. And then just to also finally note, there are over 100 local leaders in various cities across the Tri-County area that have signed on to this. And I didn't have enough copies, but there are five among you there, so that you can see the list of those elected representatives who've been signing, different mayors, city council members, county commissioners. So there's wide support. It's just something that I think we need to have more engagement around, and I'm hoping that you will allow for that kind of engagement. Thank you very much for your time and consideration.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Jane Kittelhandfor. To the woman who was upset about their seating arrangements, please note that several meetings and years ago, a seating arrangement was set where the treasurer and the clerk sat at the end. The council and administrator sat next, and the council filled in the middle. So there is nothing wrong with changing the setup. The attorney at one point was moved to sit next to the mayor, because the mayor is being sued quite often for speaking out on things he shouldn't have been doing. I noticed that there are a lot of head of the departments that come up here, but there are very few to know employees that speak up. My perception from this is because they're all in fear. They don't come forward to speak about anything that's going on in this city because their jobs are in line and it's their bosses who are talking. I don't know myself what's going on. What I'd like to see you do as a whole is a blind survey of every single person in this city on how they feel about a city administrator, if Mark's the current one, how they feel about all the department leads, a blind survey, and how they feel on how they're being treated as employees, so you actually know. Because I do know your HR department is not doing anything about it. I know that they do not write any ethics forms against anyone. I know that all they do is counseling. I know that they don't do yearly evaluations because they feel that they're just not right, which every corporation and business in the world does. Mayor, you are on a HR department. I'm quite sure you're well aware of how evaluations go, and everybody's entitled to them. As for Mark, I have nothing against you. I have talked to you straightforward. I've told you what I say to your face is what I say behind you. I have, the only thing I have against him being the number two is, in the work session, Dan even said it himself, the date January 17th was placed there because he would be hired back in then. I'm not going to read this whole thing because it's between Mark. It wasn't released, but I will read part of this. It is public knowledge if it's wanted to be. But it says that something in ethic forums could not be moved forward. Ultimately, the complaint is moot because the city administrator has tendered a resignation and will, in an immediate future, no longer be an employee of office of the city or required by the ethics ordinance. That was signed by the attorney, accepting his resignation at that point. It was sent to the mayor and several other people. The mayor never denied it. The councilor never denied it. Therefore, his resignation was accepted. With those two points, I have no problem with Mark staying on and applying for the position that needs to be pointed out. I come up here, I speak about following the rules, following the charters, and I know you all ignore me, but this is another proof. If he liked the job, let him apply for it. That's absolutely wonderful. I don't think he should have put his resignation in without talking to everybody first, but he did. And sometimes your actions have consequences. Thank you for your time.
What else is coming up? We'll close public comments and move on to the consent agenda. This evening, the consent agenda consists of purchasing actions, finance actions, and licenses and permits, including a street closure request from the fire department for Fire Safety Day to close Baylon from Manor to Reek on Wednesday, July 10th, from 2:00 p.m. to 5:00 p.m., and a parade permit for the street fair annual 5K run fee waived. Motion for the consent agenda.
Motion, Mayor.
Motion by Mr. Schleck. Thank you. Second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Marcos. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion is carried. Resolution One is to accept the quote for required NFPA 1582 yearly physicals and approve to using BioCare for 22 physicals for the fire department at a cost of $10,540 with funds from account 10133683500. Motion, please.
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Marcos.
Second.
Second by Mr. Barr. Chief O'Reilly.
Good day. I'm here to ask for permission to accept the bid, the quote from BioCare, to perform our annual physicals. This is a new system that we will be doing each year. That way, we can keep track of the health of the firefighters. If there are any issues that they need to apply for with federal medical or state medical programs, this is the information that they would be required to provide.
Does anyone have any questions? Does anyone have any questions? Hearing not in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Resolution is approved. Thank you. Come to resolution two, to approve the recommendation of the Human Resource Committee to offer the city administrator, Mark Kibbe, a salary of $146,500, effective June 17, and to increase the car allowance to $4,800. Motion.
Motion.
Second.
I had a motion from Mr. Valerius.
Or Marcos.
Second from Mr. Marcos. Was it the other way around?
Point of order, Mayor. I'll give the updated resolutions.
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you.
So, to reflect in the record, I have a motion by Marcos, supported by Councilman Valerius. And this is the resolution is handed to me. Whereas the city administrator tendered a resignation, but the resignation is not effective as of this date and has not been formally accepted by the city council. And whereas the HR committee met with Mark Kibbe and discussed revising his current compensation package and continuing his employment as city administrator. Now, therefore, be it resolved, the council acknowledges and agrees to the recession rescission of the resignation and agrees to the following compensation package, effective June 17, 2024, annual salary of $146,500, and as said, an annual vehicle expense of $4,800, $4,800 a month.
Thank you, Michael. See, as the resolution is read by Mr. Mizzi, acceptable to the original motion as second? Thank you. Comments or questions?
One question. That was $4,800 a year, correct?
Correct.
Yes. Mayor?
Yes.
I want to say, last meeting, to echo Mr. Kibbe's comments, was a very powerful meeting. And just to give people in the audience the genesis of this, I think I would like to, I owe it to you as your, as your elected official. Hearing everybody's testimony to the importance that Mark has played in this city's recovery and our current success, hearing all of the support that I did from, in this chamber, it led me to go into Mark's office afterwards and, and ask him if there was a way that we could keep him. That is how we've arrived at this resolution that we have in front of us. And I want to reiterate and emphasize something that Mr. Mazag, that Kurt said, is that this city, I can't emphasize this enough, can't emphasize enough, that this city is better with Mark than we are without. And that is something that everybody that I have talked to for the past two weeks, I have reiterated that point over and over and over again. And Mr. Wurtzbocker came up here last week, or last meeting, and he gave a very convincing list of accomplishments that Mr. Kibbe has accomplished in his time here. And many of those things directly address, and again, Ray, I always appreciate the things that you bring up, because these are concerns, and that debt is something that you, that you rightfully, rightfully keep at the forefront of our mind. Mark has worked tirelessly, tirelessly to make that better for the city. We have paid down debt, to the point where we are saving that interest for, for our residents. We have a plan to pay down future debt. And I understand that, that fear that, that this, what I have to say is, is that the reason that we are going to do that, and we are going to pay down that debt, it is going to be with the leadership of Mark Kibbe and the people that are in this room, our city employees, and that they are absolutely crucial. And I will say this, that anybody that has taken part in a large operation, they know that it is always cheaper to maintain your employees than it is to hire on new ones. The search that goes into hiring a new employee, the vetting process, and if you look at the MML right now, just one example, one example, the city of Midland, granted larger than us, but they're hiring a deputy city administrator, a deputy city administrator, and the pay rate for that is going from 120 to 160. If you look at the, our communities that are comparable to us, Madison Heights is probably the closest as far as population and taxable value. We're within a few hundred of population and a few thousand as taxable value. They are paying their city administrator $154,000, to Pam's point. And honestly, Pam and Wayne Smith, they're at every meeting that they're in town for. And when I saw Pam get up last, last meeting, I knew that this was important. I knew that this was important. And just to, to everybody in this room, I, I can't emphasize this enough, that we are doing incredibly crucial, important work, that many people in the city, and I believe, again, it was Kurt that says this, that it's that silence, maybe it was Ed, I don't remember. When we have quiet meetings where we don't hear from people, there is very important work that's going on that needs to get done. The crucial, crucial project that you are going to be hearing more out of, out of this council is going to be the fire station, where these people live. It's their home. And I would, I would invite you, and we're going to, to go through and see the conditions that they are living in. It is not acceptable. It is not safe. It is not what they deserve as the people that are going to sacrifice their lives to preserve the lives and property of the residents of Allen Park. That is an $8 million project. $8 million project, and that is not something that you can just take out the person that has been the lead on it, that has talked to every single department head, that has worked with the contractor, has pre-arranged, that has, that has a relationship with those contractors. It is not that easy. It is not that easy to just say, we're going to have somebody else go do it. And I have serious doubts. I have serious doubts that we will be able to get this fire station shovels in the ground within this year if Mark is not in that seat. And that should be a concern to every citizen of this city. That should be a concern to everybody that is here. And I do want to just address Ms. Kittel's point. Mark is an employee, as of today, and we have not, this body has not formally accepted any sort of letter of resignation. This is something that we have entered into renegotiation with our current employee. And to wrap up by saying, this is something that my wife has been, I've been spending time working on this the last couple of weeks, and my wife has been very patient with me and my stress that I've been coming home with. And on the way out the door, feeding my 18-month-old son, she said, thank you for making this a better place to live for our son. But it's not me. It's Mark, it's our department heads, it's every single employee that comes to work every single day, and they go into burning buildings, and they pull over drunk drivers, and they get into dark, dirty holes in the middle of the night, so that when you turn your water, the tap comes on, so that when you call 911, somebody shows up. And every single one of those things goes back to that seat right there. I cannot emphasize how important it is that we maintain Mark Kibbe as our city administrator. Thank you, Mayor.
Mayor, I'd like to make comments, please? I want to start by saying, the reason I serve on city council is to ensure that our city is a great place to live, work, worship, and play. Respect, transparency, accountability, and collaboration are not just words to me. They're the bedrock of our citizens of Allen Park. After my actions in October last year, I had a lot of time to reflect, even as people who once called me friend ignored me and my family. I deeply dived into what the city means to me and my personal ethics. I was in a very dark place, abandoned by those I thought I could rely on. I realized that I have strayed from what I was important, especially accountability and responsibility. The court ordered me to pay fees, take an anger management course, and publicly apologize. I took responsibility for my actions. Not only did I comply, but I continued to complete my community service hours with a smile, because I get to serve the residents of Allen Park, the city where my wife and my children come home, the children that also looked at me before I left and said, thank you for doing what I do for Allen Park. You're not the only one, Mr. Lloyd. And I did it because I truly was sorry for what I did, and I believe in accountability. I faked, faced the ethics board as mandated by our city, and they recommended that I be censured. Everyone on this council, apart from Mr. Marcos, who was not present that day, to pass a resolution to censor my actions. You spoke out loud and clear about the importance of ethics in our community. I did not run. I did not hide, and I did not claim that the system was on fear. But what happened on the very same night, Mr. Kibbe had an outrageous outburst. He stormed, slammed a door, nearly hit a resident, and was heard saying, F this city, only saying the words. He did this in front of four council members. The mayor, the city attorney, and many other residents were still present. What's truly outrageous is that it wasn't the first time. His behavior has been a pattern for years. He has screamed in the face of the department heads, refused to meet with others, openly criticized anyone that, on council, past and present, who just dared to disagree with him. These actions are completely unacceptable for a city administrator. Those actions have been presented to not only the city attorney, but the mayor in writing. If I or any of you have done these things, we have been held accountable immediately, most likely confronted with termination, and have the fun, full-time job of finding another job. And yet, what happened next? A resident followed the proper procedures of city of Allen Park and submitted an ethics complaint. And Mr. Kibbe submitted a resignation letter. He was not terminated. He chose to resign, instead of facing the consequences for his actions. As of today, Mr. Kibbe has still not had the decency to rescind his resignation, and the last day of employment with the city of Allen Park is set for Friday, June 14. This man has shown nothing but contempt for our community with his recent words, and will soon believe in, on his own terms, if he so chooses. Not because we held him accountable, but because we choose to run away from the mess he created. What truly makes me mad is the handling of his ethics complaint against him. The complaint was disclosed with, I feel, excuse that said, since Mr. Kibbe will no longer be an employee of office of the city in the immediate future, as required by the ethics ordinance, there's no need to proceed. It's a blatant disregard for ethical standards that we are supposed to uphold. By allowing this complaint to be dismissed on such grounds, we are sending a clear message that you can behave any way, escape facing any real consequences, and even get rewarded for it, as long as you resign before we can act. This entire situation is a slap in the face to every resident of Allen Park. It shows a complete lack of backbone and integrity for those responsible for ensuring our city's leadership is held to the highest standards. Mr. Kibbe should be held accountable through and through investigation and appropriate disciplinary action, not allowed to slink away quality quietly with his resignation and get out of jail free card. This is not just a declaration of duty, but a profound betrayal of the trust placed in us by the citizens of Allen Park. We owe that to every single resident. We should reopen that ethics complaint, investigate his contact thoroughly, ensure that he faces the consequences, as he so desperately tried to avoid, just as I have, and didn't avoid. As of today, instead of taking responsibility for his actions, Mr. Kibbe is being considered for a reward for a substantial pay raise. How can we look at you, the citizens of the eye, and tell them that rewarding such implorable behavior with a pay raise? This is not leadership. This is cowardice. A pay raise of over $20,000 when our city is still in a fragile state and desperately needs to rebuild our fire station, a fire station that these very firefighters in front of us know full well needs to rebuild and actions to complete. A fire station that our city administrator, of many things that we looked at, without even talking further to citizens, proposing multiple avenues, one of which, a tax hike. This is an insult to everyone with hard-working residents who pays their taxes and expects their leaders to act with integrity and look at what we have done. Now, I know we need to look at options, but we can't just act so. Allen Parkers are strong, and we can handle challenges, but does our city really depend on one individual? Will our city crumble without Mr. Kibbe? Absolutely not. Everyone is replaceable. That's something I learned in my, early in my business career for over 10 years. Change is not necessarily bad. In fact, Merriam-Webster defines changes to make and become different. It's not something to fear. It's something to embrace when necessary. We in Allen Park should reward hard work and truth, not someone who has shamed our city and refused to take responsibility or even apologized for his wrongdoing. That's what I was looking for. This situation is a travesty. It's infuriating that we are even considering rewarding such behavior. We need a city administrator who will always show respect for all employees, and that counts with, starts with apology to city officials and the public. Be responsible and accountable, engage with the community, collaborate with all department heads, measure performance, and not be afraid to be measured. You, the citizens of Allen Park, are why we are here. It is our responsibility to ensure we have a functioning, collaborative, accountable, and responsible government. You deserve leaders who are willing to stand up for you and not tolerate this kind of disgraceful behavior. I'm not above the law, nor is anyone else. No one is above forgiveness, but forgiveness is not all that is granted. I call upon those I serve on council to act as true leaders to understand the difference between management and leadership. We are here to serve the people, not to protect a bureaucrat who cannot control his temper. We're elected leaders, and as much we should act as such. The manager administrators, the leader innovates. The manager is a copy. The leader is original. The manager retains, the leader develops. The manager focuses on systems and structure. The leader focuses on people. The manager asks how and when. The leader asks what and why. Effective city management is both politically acceptable and missionally sustainable. It's not about covering up or rewarding bad behavior. It's about doing what is right for our community. And I thank Mr. Kibbe for his comments. I'm not saying Mr. Kibbe is a bad person. I know he has done great things for our city, and I thank him for that, and I thank him for sharing his comments today. But it's truly other unacceptable for me to overlook these repeated actions, and even without apologizing. At the end of this meeting, I demand that us, as council, take action. Our city deserves better leadership, and it starts with continuing to hold people accountable for their actions, like I was held accountable, and everyone should be held accountable. How can we truly look at the recent high school graduates and say congratulations if we can't be true to ourselves? Now, at the end of this, I will not walk off this meeting with my head down. My head will be held high, and the sun will rise again tomorrow. I will live with my action and my speech I'm speaking today, knowing that the choices I make are not easy. As President Kennedy once said, "We do things not because they are easy, but because they are hard." Thank you.
Well, I will make a few, because there were a lot of pieces put together in that last commentary, but they, they don't all fit. We're trying to create a picture out of a broken puzzle, and one does not follow after the other. I do not recall, I don't think that when an ethics complaint is filed against someone, that everybody gets to see it. I may have seen it. I probably filed it away. One thing that was overlooked, while they did reference that it might be a moot point, it was also commented that there was no basis for the complaint and that it would not have been processed anyway. I think for Mr., for Councilman Schleck to compare it to the complaint that was filed against him is rather disingenuous. There is no comparison between somebody perhaps losing their temper, which we have all done at some time or another in different locations, and doing what was done by him. And again, for people who are not aware, the, the council has no impact on the Board of Ethics. Any ethics complaint goes to outside council. It does not come to our city attorney. It is handed over to the board. There is no participation by mayor or council with the Board of Ethics. They are a strictly independent body that is counseled by outside council, and the only other person from the city that is there is the city clerk by virtue of the charter.
Just for the chair, just to clarify, I'm not involved in it, but an attorney in my firm is involved in it, so it's not outside council. I'm not involved in that.
Thank you.
And I stay away from that, just like I did any of these, is because I know everybody.
I could piggyback on a lot of the things that Mr. Lloyd communicated most eloquently. I think the emphasis should be, is that this was, Mark's resignation was not to leverage... I think the emphasis should be is that this was, Mark's resignation was not to leverage his position. None of our employees have come to us to ever leverage a position. When he handed in his resignation, he did it for his mental and physical well-being with the support of his wife and son. As Dan indicated after the last meeting, and if people will please re-watch that video, you will see that the majority of people coming up to speak were not department heads, but in fact, employees. In fact, I was rather surprised to see several employees approach that podium that never in my wildest dreams would I have thought that they would have come up. It was not in their character. And I am here every day, and I see the interaction of our employees with Mr. Kibbe. And I would be hard-pressed to tell you that there is a one of them that's frightened of him and feels that they cannot go in and talk to him. And statements being made about interactions with council, et cetera, et cetera. You know, we have adult discussions from time to time, but there's no one that I would rather work with and put the future of this city and trust the future of this city than with Mr. Kibbe. People are not running out trying to become city administrators and city managers. As a matter of fact, they are leaving the profession. Because every four years, and in some communities, every two years, you could be replaced because I want to put somebody in there that I know. They don't know what they're doing, but hey, they're a friend of mine. Oh, I think we had that occur when we bought a movie studio. Dan talked about comparisons. I have one for you. You want to talk about people earning what they're worth? This was brought to my attention by someone outside of the organization, and this is an MML study data that I'm looking at. The city of Northville, the city of Northville, which has a population, I've got too many Has a population of 6,119. 600,000, 6,119 population as compared to our 28,000. You know what they hired a city manager last year at? And they also get extra pay, as do many of them, $500 a month, which in this case comes to $6,000 annually. I have a whole bunch of these columns highlighted. The HR committee looks at every salaried employee in this city every year to make sure that we are treating them fairly. You can't sit here in one instance and say, "How do we attract good employees?" and then say, "We don't want to pay you what you're worth." We do not have people lining up in droves to work for cities. It's just not happening. Right now, we have a critical project, and that is the fire station. For those who are unable to attend, Councilmen, I will write up my notes. And this was shared in an open meeting, and I will share it here. When your fire chief tells you that if that building was a new building or a building that had to be inspected, that fire station would not be given a certificate of occupancy That's for starters. And the faster we can get to work on that, the better off we'll all be, as will our employees, who, as Dan pointed out, this is their home. They are there 24/7 in accommodations you would not want to be in and exposed to things that you should not be exposed to. I am finished with my comments. If anyone else wishes to make? Anyone else wish to make a comment? If not, we will take a vote to approve Resolution Two. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Opposed. Would you like to take a roll call on that, please?
For the record, I have Nick and Schleck. Is that correct? Okay, I don't need a roll call. I see what's going on here, and I think Allen Park will too, and I'm sorry.
Please, please. Point of order, please.
I apologize. That could be ethics, Ms. Kidd.
Point of order, please. Mr. Mizzi, please.
Next item.
So by a vote of five to two, it is approved.
Allen Park won today.
Did they? All right, Resolution Four. To approve the purchase of a flight submersible pump in the amount of 277, I'll get it out, $277,042 with funds from account 592-545-98600 from Kennedy Industries. May I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Valerius, second by Mr. Barr. Mr. Murray will now tell us about the pump.
Good evening. So we need to install a new pump at the college pump station, which is storm water, not sanitary, just so everyone understands. It feeds the whole north side of Southfield for all the roads for the rainwater. We have four pumps. Three of them are dead. One of them is hand pump only, not on auto, so this is very crucial to take care of so we don't flood the streets. Again, this is not your basements. We are doing a study on this to make sure we get the correct pumps, correct flow, everything of that nature. It's still about two years out for the finish of that study. We cannot wait any longer. So I got three quotes from companies that'll come in. They have to remove all the pumps. We're going to leave the one that we can keep in hand so you have a backup. And repipe everything for the new pump. That's what this price is for, is all the work of removing, repiping, putting a brand-new pump in. That way it'd be on auto. That's what I am asking you for.
Thank you. Any questions from council? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We can get that new pump. Thank you. Now we come to elected officials' comments. This evening, we start with Ms. Nick.
Thank you. I've lived in Allen Park my whole life. My family's lived here. I raised my family here. I raised my daughters here. Okay, I do care about this city just because my vote or what I believe in is different than maybe some of the other people on my council does not mean that I don't love this city and that I am not doing the best that I think is for this city. Okay? My life has been threatened several times, so has two other council members on this board, because we're not voting the way that a certain person thinks we should vote. Okay, and Mark is not you, so I just want to make that clear. This is not about Mark. All right? So my front door has been destroyed two days after that public letter went out, and some falsehoods were written on that. Okay, I did file a police report. I've been with the state police this morning. So just because the democracy, I am allowed to vote no. That's what this is for up here, and I'm sorry I don't agree with everybody in this room. But I do care about this city, and I have since I've been on. I've helped the police. I've helped the fire get something that they need. So I've helped some residents. Okay, that's behind the scenes, so I am helping out this community. I've been on seven months. That's it. Okay, I've learned a lot being on. What I thought it was going to be like being on council is not at all what it's like, okay, out there. So if anybody's thinking of running, you know, you might want to think again. So, but like I said, I do, I mean, I've been told, you know, when I ask a question, I've actually been told this, "Don't worry about it, Nancy. It's already been taken care of." I ask for different documents. I ask for different things because I am mayor pro temp, so I'm trying to learn the best that I can. I go to community or committee meetings at night so that I can learn more about this community and everything that's going on. So I'm sure after this meeting, I'm sure I'll get threatened again, but I do care about this city. Thank you.
Mr. Valerius.
A couple of things. Me being an English teacher and loving words and vocabulary, yes, I read the dictionary as a kid for entertainment. The word grudge came to mind, and it's kind of has a lot of synonyms for ill will, malevolence, malice, spite. But the definition's kind of crucial. Grudge means the desire to see another experience pain, injury, or distress. A grudge implies a harbored feeling of resentment or ill will that seeks satisfaction or that the seeker is seeking satisfaction for only themselves. The grudge a person, this is just a quote I found, "The grudge a person nurses against you is about them, not you." They are the one who harbors resentment and keeps the fire burning. On a more important note, I had the opportunity on Friday to take a tour of the fire station with our fire chief and deputy chief. There's firefighters out here, so I appreciate you welcoming me into your home. But if that was my home, I'd be putting a for sale sign on it and move. Again, what you are asked to do and where you are asked to live is just, it's incredible. I encourage, as we continue our conversation about renovations and work that needs to be done on that, to schedule a tour. Go through that facility, because you will be as amazed, and I say that not being amazed like, wow, this is so nice. I say that being amazed that these people live in that building. And that's where they spend the majority of their time, serving the community. And like I said, you look at it from the outside, and it looks like a really, really nice building. And I told the chief this, you know, because I'm walking through the bays, and I'm like a little kid looking at the fire trucks, and I'm like, this is so cool. But then when we went through one door, it all changed, because then reality sets in and you see the conditions that they're asked to live in daily. It's just, again, like the mayor said, and you know, if they had an inspection done on that building, they would fail the inspection, and they couldn't even stay there. But yet, that's their home. That's where they're living. That's where they're working. It's our responsibility as a council and as residents of the city to do something to make sure that that doesn't continue for them. So again, I encourage you to set something up, ask for a tour of that facility so that your eyes could be opened as mine were, because again, it's really something to see what we're asking them to stay in, and then continue doing the work that they do as lifesavers and public service employees for our city. And with that, I yield.
Thank you. Mr. Marcos?
Not much, but I want to echo again, Councilman Valerius, on the fire station. I went through it with Chief Can about three years ago and was appalled that anyone would live in this place for days on end. I think anyone who doesn't think it's a good idea, please go over and walk through it. You need to. It's bad, and I feel bad for these guys, and the sooner we can get this job done, the better. Also, tonight's vote on Resolution Two, I voted yes. It was a vote for this people of the city. We are better, better served with the yes vote of Resolution Two. We're better served with Mark Kibbe sitting here than we aren't. That's about all I got to say, other than it's corn on the cob day. And it's National Cotton Candy Day. And last, Call Your Doctor Day. I did that yesterday. Again, thank you all for coming. Thank you for the support, and good night. I yield.
Mr. Barr?
I'm going to change my rotation around of my paragraphs to all the Allen Park staff. This includes police, fire, public works, all the staff, front office. Please, you guys do a great job. Especially today, I was heading the morning mass at Cabrini, and I came down Russell Street, and there was a mini geyser. I have to say thank you to the water department, because as I was calling, I did not know if they were contacted even the overnight, you know, line. To my brethren here on the dimes, you know, sisters, brothers, we are, we are, believe it or not, a fraternal order under. We are to treat each other with respect, act accordingly. We all want the city to succeed, but sometimes an organization has to step back. Something I learned a long time ago, you do have to step back and regroup and then recharge forward, you know, charge forward. Coming from the federal government and as a private business owner, yes, there was a few payless paydays because of no budget. That was the federal end, and the fear of not being able to meet payroll. That was my business. Thankfully, the payday was backpaid. I never had to miss a payroll. I'm going to digress. I do have one motto that I have learned through all my fraternal organizations. It is, if you cannot speak well of another fraternal brother or sister, you do not speak ill of them. Lately, I have bit my lip on several occasions. I care about the city, always have for the last 36 years, I think it is, out of 38, when I moved out of here for two years. This is, I'm proud to call this home. I'm serious. I love it. With Mark, I'm, I'm, I don't know how to say it. I really care about you. I really do. So with that, I yield.
Thank you, Gerald.
Thank you.
I'm not going to go on for another however long that was. I will start by saying I definitely been and seen the fire station. I've heard it multiple times, so have my children, and I'm fully supportive of doing what we need to do, rather. And I looked at, talked to Mr. Baker about rehabbing. And I looked at, talked to Mr. Baker about rehabbing the building, I'm definitely for it. I know the building is, uh, generally sound and I definitely want to move forward to do something for the fire department. So if anyone construes that differently, that's not what my, what I said. What I was looking for, and I didn't say my incident was the same, I'm just saying when you see, we hear repeated instances, I was looking for an apology. Simple, I was slammed multiple times by people all around this community by saying, just say apologize, get on with it, move on. That's what I was looking for. You didn't hear me in this statement say, "I request his termination." You didn't hear me say any of those words. I was looking for apology and I was looking for things to be changed. Change in our community where we can goal set, changes where we can work more cohesive as a city council that I don't feel that we're doing now. It wasn't as if I was throwing away years of service that I feel that he done, did. And when I walk out of here today, I'm not gonna walk out throwing my pin, get angry and go, "I'm never gonna speak Mark again." I will respect the decision of council, like I respect this board and will respect that decision that was made. I'm not gonna dismiss that and just say, "The hell with it," never support anything going forward again. But I do want to see some serious changes happen. I think that is necessary. I mean, we have some dissent here and, you know, we could fix this. This is not something that can't be fixed. I don't believe anything can be fixed. Right, like I said in my comments, apology goes a long way. Forgiveness means something. You know, that, it's simple words like that, you know? It's not, it, it takes a lot to do it and it takes courage. Just like I didn't walk away and I expect if Mr. Kibbe retains, wants this position, like I said, I'm not gonna condemn it, I'm not gonna yell it, I'm not gonna scream, I'm not gonna vote, the very next meeting, demand his head. That's not who I am. I want the best for the city, that's why I started by saying why I became councilman and I still stand by that. And I believe that if those are true from everyone up here and that is true for Mr. Kibbe, then let's make the city the best place we can within our ability. Well, let's do it more united than divided. I yield.
Thank you. Mr. Lloyd.
I want to start by, just real quickly, and there's only a handful of people in this room that can really speak to how difficult it is, how difficult it is to sit in these chairs. And there's a few in the audience that can speak to that. It is an incredibly challenging job and unfortunately, not enough people want to do it. And as somebody that holds democracy in such high regard, it makes me truly sad that in the last election, we had eight people running for six seats, six of them on the ballot. That's, it's, it is very sad and this is a very difficult job. And the decisions that we make up here, we do not make lightly and I promise you, I, and, and whether you liked the person's vote tonight or you did not like their vote tonight, I promise you that nobody arrived on that decision lightly. And I, and over the course of my time on council, I've spoken with everybody up here at some point or another, and what I've said to every single one of them is I don't expect to vote the same way every single time. I don't expect that. And I understand that passions run high, but when I hear Councilwoman Nick say that her life is threatened or that she feels threatened in this position because she's trying to serve as a public servant, that breaks my heart. Because we may have differed on what we think is best for the city, but that is unacceptable. Um, and, and I, and I say the same thing for Councilman Schlag. Uh, and, uh, I, I teach advanced placement U.S. history, my dad taught it before me. I still use his PowerPoint slides, it's something that's very close to me. I feel like when I teach, I'm with him. And when I teach the election of eighteen hundred between Thomas Jefferson and John Adams, he, uh, puts Thomas Jefferson's inaugural speech in eighteen oh one on there. And in it, my dad highlighted these words, "A difference of opinion is not a difference of principle." And, and if you, especially going into an election year, if you want to feel better about all the chaos that we're, is about to ensue, I encourage you to go look up the election of eighteen hundred. It was vile, it was nasty. It was, it was mud throwing to the extreme. Uh, but at the very end, Thomas Jefferson, to his credit, asked for unity. And I'm, I'm, I know that we have a difference of opinion up here, but I know as Councilman Schlag said, that we can, we can come together and we can overcome that. And I think that it, for the citizens of Allen Park, it is absolutely crucial that we do. So I appreciate everybody up here. As, as, uh, Councilman Barr said, there's, there's not that many people, there's not that many people in the city that know how hard this job is. And a lot of them are sitting in this room right now. So I would, I would ask, um, I'm not telling you not to come and complain to your, your, your elected officials because that's what we get paid for. That's our job, is to listen to your complaints, I'm not saying that. Stop me when I'm walking my dog, people do, tell me what's wrong with the city. But what I'm saying is, is, is try to take it with, with a, a note of understanding that this is a hard thing to do. Uh, I'm, I don't want to sound too repetitive, but it's something that everyone in this room needs to hear, is that the fire station is absolutely crucial that we get done and that it's not gonna be an easy thing to do. It will most likely involve us paying more taxes. I'm, I'm just gonna say that. And I know that that's something that no one wants to hear. But before you immediately say no to that, I really need you to see the conditions that we're in. It is absolutely essential. Before you, before, that is your gut reaction and I get that, I pay taxes in this city too, you need to see it for yourself. This is not a need, I'm sorry, this is not a once, this is not a once, this is a need. We need to get this done. So I encourage everybody in this room that's a citizen of Allen Park, okay, or spends time in the city of Allen Park, I encourage everybody that is watching this online, talk to everybody that you can about the community, about how important this project is, and if you have your doubts, please, 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 go look with your own eyes first. It's absolutely crucial. Thank you so much. I yield.
Thank you. Mr. Osterhauer.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Tonight I want to, uh, on behalf of, uh, all the, my fellow coun- council members, I want to congratulate firefighter McLaren for receiving, uh, twenty-five years as of June twenty-fourth. Thank you very much for your service to our city. Uh, also, congratulations to our graduates, um, seniors, I'm seeing, walking around, driving around, coming in for lunch, so I know that, uh, they're happy to be out of school and tomorrow is the last day of school for everybody else. Lastly, congratulations to my, um, my son and the rest of the eighth graders that are at, uh, the farewell dance tonight, eighth grade dance. I'm sure they're living it up and having a great time and they deserve it. With that, uh, have a safe and wonderful summer, uh, and, uh, continue to do great things, um, speaking to the students here, and, uh, God bless and good night.
Thank you. Mr. Mizzi.
Yes. I, I really wasn't gonna say anything because I've said a lot lately. But know this, what people take as anger and aggression, it's passion in better politics than that, okay? I've been around here thirty years. I've seen every game played you can ever see. I see conniving going on where people are trying to say, "There, it's other places." We're seeing that in our national media. It's here, no, it's here, which way is it? You've got that going on right here. But I want to assure that when people say, "Mark's aggressive, Mark's hostile," anyone here, like me raising my voice, I'm ADHD, I can't help it because I'm very passionate about this city. Thirty years, I've committed my life to this city. I now make half of what Mark Kibbe makes. I don't care. He's worth triple what I get paid. I don't care about the money, there is no gain for me in any of this. I was taught by Beverly J. Kelly that if you have any ounce of power, you use it for good and to help its run. It's a game, guys, this is politics. Welcome to politics. If you took it personal, it's nothing. I've learned from the best. I knew Dominic Baccabella, I knew Harold Duda, heck, I remember Frank Lada, who'd sit up with a cigar the whole time. So when people, I'm sure people say, "Mizzi's nuts." Yeah, they called me that before. He's crazy. He thinks the studio's gonna go bad. Yeah, it did, and it did. So this time, I thought I was behind the, but everybody, how you vote, I would never want to do their job, I've said that seven or eight times, okay? I talk a good game. I don't know what I'd do if you handed me a vote. I've told many of them many times, you can take my advice or not, I'm not the one who has to say yes or no. I don't disrespect you, Ms. Nick, or you show. It's the respect you showed them. I threw back what all of these people perceived towards him. Because what you call hostile and aggressive, they saw Mark not taking it anymore finally because you're not the first group to put him under the pressure cooker. The same people he thanked for bringing him in, put him through a ringer a couple times. This man's been vetted more times. Look, I got vocal during the studio project. I want people to know that is literally how severe this was. Losing this guy would have been horrible. And you talk about procedures for how to hire or let go of administrator, let me tell you a quick story. I'm not gonna go negative, I'm very happy. This city's in a good place, thank you, thank you, and thank you. But I watched a good knowledgeable administrator, new mayor, council, get in. He's talking to the mayor and some other, one of the council people. And as they're walking down the long hall at Old City Hall, they hand him a packet, okay? So, he's still talking, smiling, and then the meeting's getting ready to start, so he sits down, starts going through the packet, and you can actually see his jaw drop. It was a resolution that they no longer needed his services and the former council person who knows city stuff, a puppet, was hired that second later. Never contested, they tried, no attorney would take it. Because you could say procedure all you want, th- there, this is a very good group, you should respect them, most of them. Because they do want to be transparent, they, they honor each other's opinions. I sat up here with people who didn't honor anyone's opinions. Why did I get vocal? Because I'm a good politician. Everyone says, "Oh, Mike's a city clerk, Mike's a city..." City clerk's number one job is get elected. You're a politician. What did I do? I chose a side without voting because I know where, what, who's gonna, I, I basically knew Mark's gonna win for this city. So again, what people take as, "I was threatened, I was harassed, he was hostile," it's passion in politics. It's, it's just the way it is. I'm sorry if you got outmaneuvered, outplayed, but I promise, I won't open my mouth again like this unless the city's threatened. And because of this, I have a huge target on my back. You talk about threat and try being the head election official. Read the news, people, threats, I've been getting them for a decade. You know what I, because I'm passionate about this job, I got people across the street from the park watching me, watching me. I have people asking about my kids right now. Some of them are in this room, but I don't worry about them. Why? Because I've got real people threatening me out there, being your head election official. I don't want praise, I'm not a martyr, but no, when I get worked up, because you want to hear about threats, I do this because I'm passionate, because I've seen so many people hurt by bad decisions, one. So, right now, Allen Park's on such a good course, I just thank you, Mayor and Council, all of you. And now, I will go back to administering the August and November elections. And with that, if you have any questions, go to www.michigan.sos/vote, okay? It has all the reference materials. I used to have a note up here. And I'm gonna be honest, that's all you're gonna hear from me from now till November, okay? Thank you all for coming out, thank you, Mark Kibbe, God bless you, good night.
I, uh, before I go into my complete closing comments, I think, uh, there was a lot of good discussion tonight, a lot of good comments from, from everyone. And, um, um, I think as a result of that, uh, some good points were made and I believe that I'm going to, uh, kind of deviate from the standard and allow Mr. Kibbe to make a, a comment before I make my closing.
I may through the chair, I, just to answer Councilman Schlag's question, I did apologize to Mr. Curry, uh, last meeting. You'd have to ask him if he accepted the apology, uh, but I did sit down and talk to him for a couple minutes afterwards. I think, uh, where's, uh, Sergeant Fel- or Lieutenant Phelps was, uh, wa- watching carefully to make sure there was no issue, but, uh, I did apologize. And I will apologize as well to Mayor, Council, the residents, uh, that was, uh, unbeh- behavior was, uh, was that kind of, shouldn't have been, should apologize.
You know, I, I was sitting here the other day thinking about everything that's been going on and the stresses that a lot of us have probably been under. And I, I got to thinking that most of the people sitting up here I've spent the last four years with, and we worked very well as a team and we've got some, some new members. You always welcome some new members and faces because as I look around, everyone brings something different to the table. And my mantra has always been, I am, I'm not, um, the boss, I am the captain of a team. And, um, you listen to different thoughts and ideas and that's how you become stronger. I still firmly believe that we can work together as a team because I do feel that people bring different thoughts and ideas to the table, they have different strengths, but we als- also have to make sure we listen to one another. I, I have worked with some longer than others and so sometimes I trust their judgment more than others because they've been through a lot with me in the past. Um, there's others I know that, um, they, they bring so much to the table when they, when they raise a question on certain issues. Frequently, I'm, I'm in awe when somebody asks a question because the realization strikes me that we can't all, all have the same questions or understanding of items brought to us. So when someone brings up a, a question on an issue, whether it's a, an agenda item or anything else, I sometimes think, hmm, that's interesting. I, I didn't think of asking that, but I'm glad that individual did because hopefully we all learn from that. I think as Mr. Barr said, it's very important that we regroup and we charge forward. It's easy to sit up here and say, "I'm, I'm up here for the residents," um, but it's, it's the actions that we take which will be the proof. There's all kinds of terms that I've, have run through my mind over time, um, and my experiences. Style over substance has no meaning, it, it accomplishes nothing. So we must look for the substance and always, always make sure that we are ready to make the hard decisions. Just want to comment, I know that Mr. Lloyd mentioned something about taxes which are frightening to people, uh, in relation to the fire station, but know that we are continuing to work very hard, uh, on funding renovations to the fire department with minimal impact on the residents. We're all taxpayers up here, I think people sometimes in the, in the audience forget that we own homes here and we pay, some own more than one home, and, uh, everyone pays taxes. So we're, you know, we're looking at various options, trying to be creative, uh, trying to do things that won't have long lasting impact. And I think one of the things that was thrown out is that, uh, and I'm not an expert and, unfortunately, our finance director isn't here because of a, a... our finance director isn't here because of a death in her family, but there is room within current taxes which would be utilized. And basically, if you were looking at, I think a home, we were talking at a $200,000 home that was being assessed at $100,000, that impact would be $60 a year, which to me is pretty cheap investment towards a fire station. So there's a lot of great work that's being done on that. We will get our fire department personnel, the facilities that they need and that they deserve. And hopefully, that will bring us more firefighters. I think I'm, we're all pretty spent tonight. I thank you all very much, thank everyone here for coming, I thank you for your input and your feedback. Enjoy the coming weekend. Happy Father's Day to all the fathers. We've got a number up here, and just basically, take care of yourselves. Thank you all, and I'll ask for a motion to adjourn.
Motion by Mr. Marcos. Signal by Mr. Barr. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, we are adjourned, we are adjourned at 7:52.